Are we to call the meeting to order? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Uh, any public comment? No, okay, then we have the consent agenda, which is, um, the authorization for payroll bills, town, for the town fund, general assistance, road department, and sewer, and then my reports, which is all the s- social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, and financial. Do I have a, a motion to approve the, the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a, we have a motion in a, in a second. Um, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Okay, um, we have then, um, we have the, uh, approval of the minutes for November 7th, 2023, the regular board meeting. Is there, uh, a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion regarding the minutes? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Uh, no presentations, all right, the, uh, elected officials' reports, uh, the assessor?
Uh, you had my written report, it was, needless to say, a very challenging time getting hit with the trifecta, but, uh, the staff performed admirably, and I was very grateful for, uh, the assistance of our part-timer, David Walker, who works remotely for us, so, uh, it worked out as well as it possibly could. I also want to make note that, um, Board of Review Commissioner Samantha Steele was tremendously helpful when we had the outreach program, and she brought along ten analysts with her, so that the people who came, which was standing room only, uh, were able to file an appeal on the spot, which was a great help, because at that point, there were over a hundred people here, and backing us up even farther if she hadn't done that, so, the cooperation from, uh, Commissioner Steele's office greatly appreciated.
Okay, are there any questions for Connie? Uh, thank you for putting that together, I think that was highly successful, I mean, we didn't even have room for, oh, we didn't have enough parking for everybody, it was unbelievable, but I think people are just really fed up with their property taxes right now, and are trying to find any way they can to keep, get, keep them under control.
Well, I did, in the newsletter article, focus on why the taxes went up, and I really think that it's essential that we start looking to this Recovery Act.
Yeah.
Um, which I will pursue this next month.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, clerk?
Um, I have a report, we had one FOIA from FOIA Professional Services of Daphne, Alabama, wanting to know about the companies that provide software services to the township, but we don't use outside companies for that, um, Administrator Piacat, back to them, and then the agency grant meeting, uh, committee has had two meetings, we've reviewed all the grant applications, and we have meetings on January 4th and 9th to have presentations from the agencies.
Okay, any questions for the clerk? All right, supervisors' report, uh, Paul? The website should be up run, when should the website be up and running?
Any day.
Any day, website should be up and running any day.
She sent out an email when it's all done. They were having some backroom problems with transfer open.
Okay.
Passwords.
Looks pretty good, I'm sure there'll be some tweaks, but, um, it should be up here shortly, and, um, I think it's really gonna improve our, our message, uh, online, uh, so when he gets up, he'll let you know, and go ahead and take a look at it, and once again, if you see anything, it can always be tweaked, but it's, what it is, it is, though, so, okay, um, also, um, the, uh, youth services started a hygiene closet, um, this is a, where they gather hygiene, um, uh, items, uh, for the schools, um, they did their first presentation to homes, I think that's, uh, yeah, homes, um, and, uh, and there was, it was, it, I never realized, um, how this was, how important this was, that a lot of kids just don't have access to that, to the, the basic hygiene items, and, um, and so Renee is putting together a program whereby, uh, she supports, um, those elementary, or those schools, elementary, junior high schools, that, um, indicate that they have an issue and would want support. It's not all of them, but it's, it's a number of them, more than, more than I would have anticipated. She hasn't quite determined how she, um, is going to, uh, fund it, uh, the initial, uh, was here, was, uh, through, um, some, uh, donation money, and, um, it may continue in that regard, or we may fund it, we'll, we'll see how it progresses. Um, we got a, uh, a res- well, some questions on Center, Center Street, which is one of the small areas on the south side of Elk Grove that we, we have responsibility for on the roads there, um, there's some guard rail issues, there's some drainage issues, um, and we've had Art out to take a look at it, our field, uh, Roden Bridge Field Rep, and then he'll work with Paul and our, um, and the appropriate contractors to over, to fix whatever can be fixed, or what should be fixed. Um, that's an area that we just, i- it's, it's sort of an oddball area, it's, it's a very short stretch, it's a dead-end stretch, it's, there's homes, but then there's all kinds of development around it, trucks, trucking, and so it, it, it does kinda get overlooked a little bit, and we're gonna take a closer look at it again here, in terms of what can and can't be done. Um, some of it may not be our responsibility, some of it may be the county, uh, for instance, there's some garbage dump there, but I think it's in someone's backyard, so the county would have to tell them, you got them, not, not us, so, we'll see. Um, policies, uh, we're working on, there's two policies I think we're gonna bring to you in the next, uh, meeting or two, one is on, uh, working from home, um, the, in particular, the adult and family counseling has come to us and indicated that they would like some options for their, for their therapist to work at home at some times, uh, not only would she feel this would allow them potentially to cover more clients, but also help us in hiring and retaining, um, and, um, and this would not be, you know, air, yeah, home the whole time, but it would be some, um, some, some particular times in your schedule, you'd be allowed to work from home, and we'll look at that across the board, too, um, it's, this is geared towards adult and family counseling, but we'll also look about some sort of, um, addressing maybe that need throughout the township, um, though I, 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 you know, it will in some areas, and won't, won't, won't work in other areas, so, we'll, we're working on a policy there, and then, also, we need to update, um, and kind of, uh, fi- and get, update our educational and li- licensing reimbursement policy, that's where we, we, we reimburse, um, uh, employees that take education or courses that further their professional skills, and we just need to make some tweaks and changes to that, so those are two policies that should be coming back to the board, and you'll get those, obviously, before, before the meeting, so you can review them, and if you have any questions, you can talk to us. I, I do wanna point out that we, um, are gonna be making investments this year in a couple areas, um, it'll be across the board, but in particularly, we're probably gonna see some investments in the food pantry, um, as we, as we, um, uh, continue to grow and expand there, uh, forklift, uh, for the food, um, a, um, additional shelving for the, uh, for the, uh, for the food pantry, um, a- and, and a number of other things that need to be done, uh, to improve, um, or expand our capability to handle people, as well as to store food and move food around, um, it may even involve, uh, the purchase of a cargo van, uh, which could be used for multiple purposes, but would also be used, uh, for the food pantry, and food and, and, and pickup and, uh, and drop-off, um, the truck, um, is not, is not just, is, is just, is not the appropriate vehicle in some situations, and it would be better that, plus a cargo van, like I said, would give us some flexibility in other ways that we could use it for. You do know the pickup up there is gonna, out there is basically worth us, and it's gonna be auctioned off. Uh, the other area is in transport, transportation, um, we're probably gonna auction off two buses, the one we knew we were gonna auction off, and then, uh, the, then is it the, I think another, the other one, we're, we're auctioning off two, um, it, because they're, they're, they're both just showing, uh, well, one is, needs to be auctioned off, the other one's showing a little more age, and we, um, and we, we kept, we have to keep these buses up, updated and, and, and safe, and so there is a, potentially, a, a bus available, a used bus available that would be a very good replacement, uh, we, um, um, at this, at this stage, so there's, it's likely we'll, we will, uh, auction off two of the buses and pick up a new, but I mean by new, it's probably gonna be a used, but one that's configured in a way that we, we need it, and I, that serves a couple purposes, it, it updates our fleet a little bit, newer, um, um, has more, uh, the accoutrements that we need on the different buses, uh, and, um, and, and, um, and reduces the mileage that we're carrying on there, and then we're gonna get more into a cycle, where we, we, every couple of years, we, we auction one off and pick up a new one, and auction one off, but we, we aren't in that cycle, we haven't been, been able to get us in that cycle yet, but we're gonna try to get in that cycle from this point on, you know, replacement cycle. Let's see, what else here? Oh, um, we are still looking for a therapist for adult and family counseling, it's very hard to find one, um, that's a little bit why we're also looking at that policy, being able to work from home, um, for, for part of the time, um, and that's, we're gonna continue to look, our waitlist has gotten to like twenty-eight, at one point, just a year and a half ago, we were at zero, um, we are down one, one therapist, well, no, we're, we're, you know, no, we're, we're back in line with where we were before, but the demand has grown, we weren't able to get that extra one that we thought we were gonna be able to, to add, so we do need another therapist, we are considering to look for that, that's been approved by the board. Uh, the board also approved a maintenance, um, uh, man, um, that would handle cleaning, maintenance, uh, backup on some of the, uh, the trucks and the, and the, um, and, and, and some of the other repair type things we have here, um, I think we found someone, but I will, um, I will get back to the board, uh, once a decision's been made there, uh, this is gonna, the, the maintenance guy's gonna help us across the board, it's, it's very hard to find, get somebody in here to fix things, so this will allow us to have somebody that's a handyman that can fix things, or can arrange, he can arrange, to have somebody come in, he also can do some of the basic cleaning, so we maybe don't have to have our cleaning company in here every night, they would come and do it maybe once a week, a deeper clean, and he could maintain it, uh, on the other times, he also, um, is a, could be a backup on some of the vehicles if they need to be driven, um, and, um, and at, and at, also, um, he's, uh, he has, has the ability, um, I think, to also serve in other capacities, um, that, that, just a broader, a broader, a broader ability for us to use him for different things, even if it's the food pantry, even if it's different things where he can fill in, and so, um, we, we do have someone, I think, in mind here, and we'll let you know if we're able to fill that position, and then we're, we're gonna need to be looking at bike safety, um, you know, we're looking at some maybe full-time, that would be bike safety seasonal, and then the other part of the year, maybe have another responsibility, or just a seasonal, part-time one, um, that's kinda dependent on what we find out there, what's available, who would wanna do what, uh, in the past, we had a, she was a, she was paid year-round, but was basically seasonal, um, and did fill in a little bit in Connie's office, I think, occasionally, um, but I, we're, we're not sure how we wanna approach this, but we, we are beginning to address that, since the bike safety should open up this spring, and so we need to, need to move forward on that, that will either be a bike safety part-time person, or it'll be a bike safety and something else, that, uh, spring and, and fall, she'll do bike safety, or he, and, um, in the other periods of time, they'll have other responsibilities, whether it's for youth services, or whether it's administrative, um, someone along that line. Then the only other thing is construction, um, in the back, it's pretty well done now, except for landscaping and gates, landscaping won't happen probably until spring, and I, I don't think the gates will probably go into that time either, um, we'll, hopefully we'll be up and running, uh, for the schools in spring, uh, we get the bike safety onboard, and we get the information out, and start addressing, and start building the program again, and we'll have a grand opening several weeks after we get started, and for both those, for both the bike safety and the challenge course. Inside, Paul, what's the situation inside now, there's still, the, the youth, the youth community, the youth and community room, and the office there, those are on, kind of, were they on hold for a little bit right now, or what?
Uh, yeah, a little bit, um, make sure I talk into the microphone, uh, the, um,
enforcing the meat.
The desk that we ordered, or, uh, we told them to put them on hold until we were ready for them, um, the GC was out here recently, and was, uh, they had the rest of the plumbing stuff finished, they could get, get in an H, B and C guy out here, they wanna test the volume of how far it's gonna carry the stuff into the bathroom area, the community room, and the offices, so there, that's coming up, I think he said this weekend, next week, and, uh, he said, it's, there's not a lot of work, there's some demo work, there's some paint, little bit of carpentry, and that's about it.
Okay, so the outdoor, as you, the challenge goes to bike safety, only a little bit more, probably in spring, the inside, um, they still need to finish off the inside, but that should be done, I would think, sometime in spring, and we can move youth services, uh, personnel back there, uh, and then the, uh, big room in the back that we're going to clean up, and, uh, and move into more of a storage for medical closet, for the, for the, uh, for the food pantry, uh, maybe even bike safety, I'm not sure what we'll do there, um, and, that, that will be cleaned up, um, cages or, or areas will be set up that, uh, will, can be used more effectively for storage, and, uh, and we'll have a forklift to be able to help us sort of manage that as well, too, bringing food in and out, um, it's becoming, we're close to nine hundred families a month now, so this is, this is becoming very, very significant, all areas, all areas are up, whether it's adult and family counseling, where we got a ba- a backlog, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the food pantry, um, even transportation's starting to pick up a little bit more, um, that had been kinda steady all these years, it's starting to pick up, and, um, the work that social services doing in processing different people, G A E A, like, like heap, all these different things, those numbers are, 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 are expanding dramatically, too, but we're okay in social services, we're okay for right now in youth, uh, youth, uh, services, um, we'll see, we'll see if they can, if they can handle with the challenge course open and everything, how that goes, whether we need to address maybe more personnel there, but at this point, no, adult and, uh, family counseling, you know we need people, uh, youth services, I mean, uh, food pantry, she's, she's gonna be looking for more, more volunteers, transportation, we're okay, but if we would find a part-time bus driver, we would hire a part-time bus driver, is, is, um, because there's a couple additional routes we'd like to add, um, the trip canceled, or is not going to one of the VA hospitals, um, the food runs on, uh, on, we could do dedicated food runs on certain days, we maybe add another day of transportation, uh, because the demands are growing, so, that's one where we'll be looking a little bit, uh, admin, um, we're, I think we're, we're good there right now, um, though Debbie may retire this summer, and then we'd need to find a replacement for Debbie, um, and so generally speaking, we're looking for people, but we, we're, we're okay where we are right now, but we're, we are looking to fill different areas that we see, where we see the demand and the needs continuing to grow. Okay, does anybody have any questions for me, I know it's a hodgepodge of different things, but it gives you, that's what life is here, a hodgepodge of different things. Any questions? No? If not, can I get a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, old business, uh, we, last week, we, um, uh, approved the tentative, uh, levies, uh, for town and general assistance, and then also for road department, the road department levy, there were, uh, they were approved with modifications, um, you have the updated levies in front of you, um, it, they contain the modifica- the amendment that was made last time, but also there's some other modifications in here to more closely reflect, um, where, where these levy funds are actually gonna go. The levy is not the final say, it's the budget that really determines where the money is allocated to, um, and so the, the levy is not exact all the time, but it, it, it should generally reflect how the funds are being used, and we've, we've, we've taken from the last meeting, uh, where Dale noticed a couple things that are out of sync, we made the amendments, we'd done, we'd gone further to make sure that this was a little bit more of a, um, of an updated look at where generally we'd be using these funds. Once again, it's the budget that specifically allocates where the money goes, um, so, that's the, um, we have, um, we have the, um, ordinance twenty, twenty-two-three-oh-four, which is the Town Fund General Assistance Levy for fiscal year twenty-two-four to twenty-five, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding the Town Fund General Assistance Levy? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, now we, uh, to the ordinance twenty-two-three-oh-five, road department levy, um, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the road department levy? If not, uh, roll call.
Did we get a motion?
I'm sorry? Yeah, you had motions.
Oh, I'm sorry, who?
Who made the fir-
Dale motion, my second, Dale did.
Thank you, I guess I was not paying attention. Okay, uh, trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Um, okay, uh, now we go to new business, there being no further old business, uh, the approval of resolution twenty-two-three-oh-seven, which is the schedule of regular board meetings, uh, for, um, at two thousand twenty-four, um, I would mention on March twenty-fifth, uh, I will not be here, and, uh, and trustee Perns won't be here, do either, do any of the other three trustees know they're gonna be gone in March, otherwise, well, because if they are, we won't have a quorum, so I need to change the date now.
I should be here.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is it your children's spring break, probably?
Yeah, that's just it, I don't know.
Is that spring break?
I don't know.
Maybe we should go up a week.
I just, yeah, maybe we should change it.
Should we move it up a week? All right, let's do, let's, I'll still be gone, I don't know if you'll be gone then, but-
So the eighteenth?
I should, no, eighteenth is should be fine.
Okay, let's, let's move the March, um, the March meeting till the eighteenth.
That's the Monday, right?
Uh, I think it's Monday, okay, Monday. So you've got January, February, the March would be modified, does anybody see any of these other dates where there's a big problem for them?
No.
Nope, okay, um, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-three-oh-seven as, as, uh, as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, uh, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, the, uh, second item on new business, the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act, Paul, did you, were you gonna say a few words on that? No, you weren't.
Not really. I talked to Jason, and he, uh, he went over the information that he had seen or had received, and I asked him if he was, do me a favor and put, put bullet point information down, that you all can see, read, understand, hopefully, and, uh, decide what you wanna do, and then, as he says here, uh, in the end, uh, I think if I can get the direction from the board, I can put pen to paper on a policy this week or early next week that we can implement by one, one, but, but get everything ratified this evening, so we can have it done the next week.
All right, so if you guys, I think maybe we should do is you all take a look at these, these options, and then would you email Paul and indicate which option you find? Pardon?
As a group, need to, like, approve that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, we'll, we'll do what options you're, you're coming, then at the next meeting, well, we can, we can, we can, we can, or I'll sit down with Paul and then see what the majority of you guys are most comfortable with, and then at, at the meeting, we can, we can discuss it and make a decision.
George, I think what Paul is saying is he needs a decision now, so it can be implemented in January.
Right.
Do you, do we need to, we, we need to have it implemented in January? We need to have it implemented in January?
Yeah, it has to be implemented by January first, so, he wants him to get the board to decide on one of these options, and then he can write this stuff, and then it can be ratified at the January meeting, but it has to be, supposed to be in place prior to January.
So there's only one question, it's either option one, two, or three, is what you're asking for, okay?
He and I spoke about what we have now with vacation, sick pay, uh, there's four.
Personal?
He's got it right here.
Okay.
Vacation, sick, um,
And personal.
This one would be a new one, and then, uh, for, uh, for when people have to tend.
Reevement.
And so, I mean, the bottom line on what this is, is it requires, um, the, us to give one hour for every forty hours, and employees, full-time or part-time, works, um, and they can be used for whatever they wanna use them for, they don't have to ask, you know, they don't have to declare that it's any particular reason, and we can't ask them even what that reason is, um, we can't require more than seven days' advance notice, uh, the, one of the problems was the way it was written, it looked like we didn't, couldn't ask for any advance notice, but I, I think what's becoming now is sort of being accepted at seven days, and the, like I said, the policy cannot be limited just to full-time, um, uh, full-time employees, now, given that we already offer at least ten days' vacation, front-loaded on, on one, on, on January first, um, and then three personal front-loaded, and then sick leave, earned per month, the most personal, there, there are several options here, and I, I, whatever, what is the, what are the ones that maybe, uh, be, what are the ones that would be most interesting, or most attractive, or you feel would be best for us to pursue? Let me take a few minutes, you wanna look at a little bit more?
He's got a little review at the end of each one of them.
Yeah, there's a review at the end. So option one, you can look through, would be revenue neutral, as he said, give the same benefits to employees, and compliant with the act, however, we would now have four separate policies, vacation, paid leave, sick, and personal, some of which categories kinda overlap, and then the, that, that, that means we're not actually giving any more vacation days, we, we just, we're adjusting our, the ones we give now back, and are adding, adding the ones that are required now in, but they can use it forever they want. The second one here, this revenue, this is revenue neutral, is two, the option two, give the same benefits to employees, and is compliant with the act, basically, then we have two policies, vacation applicable to full-time employees, and then personal leave, applicable to all employees, um, and a sick leave policy that'd be made compliant with the new Illinois law, um, we're actually adding, um, well, we're, we're adding personal days, but we're taking then two vacation days off. Sick policy is the same, so it's, you're taking from sick, you're taking from vacation and giving it to personal, and then sick policy saves the say, on the first one, we lowering vacation by fat, by five, uh, and then those five get put into paid leave, to a paid leave policy, so you'd have, you'd have a lower vacation, you'd have a new paid leave with the five days, and then you'd have a sick leave and a, uh, and a, and a, uh, another personal one, the, the categories will overlap to some degree, so you're, you're neutral, but you're taking, you're taking away in different pots, and you're leaving several, you're leaving, one, you're leaving more pots, the other one, you have fewer pots, and vacation is the one that's affected the most on those, and then option three is we convert the existing vacation policy to be compliant with the new law, perhaps increase it from ten to twelve or thirteen days for full-time employees, then create a separate policy for part-time employees, and keep the six leaves that is, that's revenue neutral, gives the same benefits, and is compliant with the act, this may reduce, this may, this may reduce the policies down to vacation and personal, and then sick, um, he likes two and three, he thinks they make the most sense, so, um, I tend to agree with him, but I'm not sure which one, two or three, I'd be most interested, I didn't, I didn't really wanna, I didn't find one to be very attractive, particularly what it does to vacation, what it shifts significant amount of days out of vacation and moves them across, so it'd be two and three that I think would be the ones we probably should look at the closest.
I like two, two gives them the personal days, which will increase our workers' satisfaction and enjoyment, and then reduce, most people go on vacation for a week, so taking them over, I think maybe, you know, ten days, I think that's a very high level.
You're taking two from vacation and then adding them basically to, to personally, but then they could do whatever they want with those days. They're not limited just to vacation.
I think that's the easiest, it's fair.
All right, let me get a sense, let me just get a sense of the board here. What would, Connie, what would you prefer?
I think I like two, myself.
Dale?
Two.
I like, I like three.
You like three? Let's see, Brian?
I like two.
David?
Two.
Why three, Dick?
Because I really appreciate my vacation days, and I like to get them lessened. And I think people might not take them if they, you know, if it's like a sick day or something like that, they might not want to take it if they're not sick. I know it's like a personal leave day, but I think people might not take them, you know? My company people, if they're not sick, they don't take them, sick days. So I don't know, I mean, just, maybe it's just the way it's, you know, the thinking is, but I just don't like to see my vacation days lessened. I want my vacation days increased as I am there longer, you know?
Okay, is there any thoughts on that, by anybody else? Do they still feel that two?
You know, it really is just a swap-out, so it's equal on both sides. And I think that if it's explained properly, they'll see that it's a no harm, no foul.
Okay. Okay.
All right. We still, I mean, Connie, still two?
Yes.
Dale?
Two. Yeah, I'm okay with two then.
Okay, Brian and David, okay. All right, I'm fine with two, too. So the sense of the board, Paul, is two? Option two. And what, if we have, if we have to have this in place by January 1st, how do we, do we, do I need to have a?
Well, he'll put something together, he said, and then he said the board can enact it or approve it or whatever at the next board meeting. It has to, it has to be in place before January 1st. So he can put it in place by using what you guys said.
And then we, we retroactively approve it, is what we're doing then, or what? In the January meeting?
Well, you're approving it now, basically. But you're, I would presume, I would presume that you should take a vote on it to say we might have option two.
Okay. I just took a sense of the board. If you think we need to have a vote, yeah. All right, let's have a vote. Is there a motion to approve option two, to have drafted up by our attorney into a policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Okay. Let's see here, is there any discussion and comments from the trustees? Does anybody have anything they want to, issues they want to bring up, or any, anything they want to ask? Okay, all right. Do you have anything to say? No, I think we're pretty well said. I would mention the seasonal programs have gone very, very well. Really, really outstanding, very, very successful, great, great participation by the community, so really happy about that. And I would say that Cory is doing, is doing an outstanding job in terms of not just running social services, but the outreach programs as well, too. And I'm also going to mention that I think that their new communications coordinator, Mandy, is, looks like it's going to be a real advantage for us, take a little bit of load off of Izzy and Paul, and I think really improve our communication products, whether it's a newsletter, a website, whatever the case may be. So those are two really nice developments. Okay, if there's no other questions or no other comments, is there a, do I hear a motion to approve? I'm to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.